We're assembled here in the municipal council chambers, 351 West Center Street, Provo, Utah. Our time is 5:31. We'd like to... This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests that attendees help maintain the decorum of the meeting by silencing electronic devices, being respectful to others, and refraining from applause or other outbursts during the proceedings of the meeting. We'd like to start with a roll call. So Cliff, we'll start with you.
Cliff Strachan.
Brian Jones.
Dave Connect.
George Stewart.
Kay Van Buren.
Dave Sewell.
George Handley.
Wayne Parker.
We make a note that council members David Harding and Gary Winington are both out of town and not here with us, although we'll try and include them by telephone. If you see Mr. Strachan voting once in a while, it's not because he's been giving... given more power. It's that he's talking to Dave Harding on the phone, and he'll be voting for Dave when we can, so... Also make a note that America Fusi is not here with us. She's had some major surgery, and she's recuperating and doing well, but she's still... still down some, so we'll miss her and hope her... hope she has a quick recovery. Our opening prayer tonight will be given by Nolan Parklin. After the prayer, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Jaina Parklin. So Nolan?
Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day. We're so thankful that we can all be gathered here today, and we pray that while we are here, that we can feel the Spirit and that we can go over important issues that need to be addressed, and that we can do so in an efficient manner. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One other note that's not on the agenda, but there was an incident with the Provo Power Department last night, and we just want to commend their quick effort and their service to the members of our community. Two-hundred-and-fifty homes were without power in the middle of the night, and they got it restored, I think before the sun came up, most of it. So they worked all night last night and took care of that, and we just want to commend them for that and thank them for their willingness to jump in and get that taken care of. Our first presentation tonight is a presentation by Judge Romney from the Justice Court, and given in the annual report to the council and the community. So Judge?
Very much for the opportunity to present. Our annual report to the Provost... on the Provo City Justice Courts. It's an honor for me to work with our great... actually, our extraordinary court administrator, Rihanna Newton, who's here this evening, and the excellent staff at the Justice Court. They're dedicated to being professional, courteous, and fulfilling the motto of Utah's Justice Courts, which is to improve the quality of life in our community. Every year, as you may know, we take a customer service survey of our customers, and over several weeks this last summer, we administered the survey to over two-hundred court customers. We were pleased that the results were favorable, especially considering that those surveyed had been in court or had been at the front counter, and generally, those folks aren't happy to be there. Despite those circumstances, the customer survey... service survey, in the survey, the respondents were satisfied with the service they've received. And I thought I'd just review some of the questions that we asked and the response to. And these responses are graded one to four, one being the least favorable response and four being the most favorable response, sort of like a grade point average. To the question, "How do you feel about the time it took to conclude your business?", the average was 3.5, rounded to the nearest tenth. To the question, "Were you treated with courtesy and respect by the staff you interacted with?", the average was 3.7. The question, "How satisfied are you with the... with your overall customer service experience?", the average was 3.6. And then the people who had a hearing before the judge today were asked to... were asked to answer these questions. "I feel that my case was handled fairly", 3.4. "I was given an opportunity to be heard and ask questions", 3.5. So we're satisfied that the customer service at the Justice Court is not only satisfactory but positive and favorable, especially considering that the people are not very anxious to be there. Many people are not familiar with the role of the Justice Court Judge. In fact, some believe that the Justice Court Judge is a justice of the peace, and that's not true and hasn't been true for several decades. Others believe that Justice Court Judges only handle traffic cases. For many, their interaction with the Justice Court has to do with a traffic citation or violation. In fiscal year 2019, Utah's Justice Courts Judge... the Justice Court Judges, rather, presided over 428,278 traffic cases. More traffic cases are filed in Justice Court by far than any other type of case. Justice Courts spend quite... Justice Court clerks, rather, spend quite a bit of time dealing with traffic cases, answering phone calls, scheduling court dates, managing court files, processing payments, and other duties. While part of the Justice Court Judge's duties do involve presiding over traffic cases, much more of a Justice Court Judge's time is spent on other matters. Many traffic cases get resolved before coming to court, and many people choose to pay a far... pay the ticket rather than schedule a hearing. Therefore, the great majority of a Justice Court Judge's time is spent dealing with a smaller number of criminal cases and other duties. But traffic cases are important. In 2016, there were 62,471 car accidents in Utah, resulting in 26,738 injuries and 281 deaths, according to Crash Facts from the Utah Highway Patrol. The number is almost six times the number of homicides in Utah during the same period. The Utah Highway Patrol also reported that 94% of those crashes are the result of human choice or error. That means they were preventable. Just as no one would argue that homicides should not be taken seriously, we also should not discount the importance of traffic cases, which cause such great loss. Traffic cases are important. Justice Courts always also have jurisdiction over small claims cases. These claims involve up to $11,000 in damages. Some Justice Court Judges preside over small claims cases. Other courts use pro temp or attorney judges to handle those cases. These are attorneys appointed by the Utah Supreme Court specifically to preside over these type of cases. They do this without compensation, and they are required to receive ongoing judicial education in small claims-related matters. That service is invaluable, particularly in courts with a high-volume caseload. Justice Court Judges also have jurisdiction over Class B and C misdemeanors and infractions committed within our... the court's territorial jurisdiction. And our territorial jurisdiction is the city limits of Provo. Some of these offenses that you may know about are first and second offense DUIs, domestic violence, theft, marijuana possession... possession of drug paraphernalia, disorderly conduct, and others. In fiscal year 2019, in the Justice Courts in Utah, there were 64,301 criminal cases filed. And now bringing it down more locally, in our Provo City Justice Court during fiscal 2019, there were 1,864 misdemeanor cases filed, of which 164 were DUI cases. The number of small claims court... or small claims cases filed was 1,401, and there were 10,915 traffic cases filed. The total number of these cases is 14,180, which constitutes what they call a weighted caseload of 1.45. In other words, there are enough cases filed in our Justice Court... excuse me, to justify 1.45 judges to handle them. While there are not as... nearly as many criminal case filings in the Justice Courts as traffic filings, it is the criminal cases that take up the bulk of the Justice Court Judge's time. Proceedings in these cases are governed by the Utah Rules of Civil Procedure... of Criminal Procedure. The defendant has rights guaranteed under the Constitution. Those include the right to be represented by counsel and the right to a jury trial. The majority of these criminal cases are resolved by plea agreements, much as they are in the district court. Many of the criminal trials are bench trials, in which the judge makes the determination of guilty or not guilty, as opposed to jury trials, where the jury makes those determinations. When a person is arrested without a warrant, the arresting officer, jail staff, or prosecutor must file what's called a probable cause statement with a magistrate, a judge, within 24 hours of the arrest. This statement provides information to support probable cause to believe that the defendant has committed a crime. The magistrate or the judge should also be presented with the results of a validated risk assessment to assist him and him or her in determining what conditions the defendant should be released on, what bail should be imposed, or whether the defendant should remain in custody. If the magistrate, the judge decides that there is no probable cause, that the defendant has committed an offense, the defendant is ordered to be released. In our fourth district, we Justice Court Judges have a rotation system set up for making probable cause determinations, and we take turns by week. When it's our week, we make all of those determinations for the Justice Courts in Utah County during that week. We're on rotation. All judges are required to attend 30 hours of continuing judicial education annually. This applies to Justice Court Judges as well. Many Justice Court Judges serve on various boards and committees, and those can include the Judicial Council and its committees, the Board of Justice Court Judges, and many others. So as you can see, there is much more work in being a Justice Court Judge than in handling traffic cases. Close to two-thirds of all of the cases filed in the Utah Courts are filed in the Justice Courts, and for that reason, and for most Utahns, the Justice Court Judge is the face of the judiciary. For hundreds of years, legal scholars have struggled to define what is meant by the rule of law. The term is not mentioned in the United States Constitution, nor is it mentioned in the Utah State Constitution, nor is it explicitly defined in federal or state codes. Yet the rule of law is the underpinning of our federal, state, and local governments. Justice Stephen Breyer of the United States Supreme Court had this to say earlier this summer in a speech as to the rule of law. "The rule of law, that's something people pay a lot of lip service to, and they try to do it, but not always perfectly, so what is it? It's a very simple thing. It's a fight against the arbitrary." That's what it was in 1215. That's why they made the king sign the Magna Carta. I'm paraphrasing, but it said, "You will act according to the law. You will not take people you don't like and throw them into jail just because you don't like them. There will be laws and judgments." A government of laws and not of men is the underlying principle in American political and legal... and in our American political and legal system. This means that no person, however powerful or however talented, can be allowed to act as if he were superior to the law. Public decisions must be made on the basis of law, and the laws must be general rules that everyone is expected to obey, including those who make the laws and those who enforce the laws. A law that violates the Constitution will not be enforced. A law that singles people out for discriminatory treatment, or one that is so vague and uncertain that a person can't know what the law requires, will not be treated as law. The rule of law is a foundational principle on which our country, state, and municipality have been established. At its core, it stands on four principles, according to the Black's Law Dictionary. They are these. Number one, the law applies to everyone. Number two, the laws are not secret or arbitrary. Number three, the laws are enforced fairly. And number four, the justice system is fair. The rule of law is a principle under which all people, institutions, and entities are accountable to laws that are publicly promulgated, equally enforced, independently adjudicated, and consistent with human rights principles. So it is that no one is above the law, and no one is beneath its protections. The rule of law provides security and accountability. A country's greatness can be measured by its adherence to the rule of law, and we are dedicated to that rule of law in the Provo City Justice Court. Our Mental Health Court program, a problem-solving court, has been in operation since our court was established in 2007. It has been effective in reducing recidivism among the defendants who participate in it. It has helped reduce the number of jail days, which those participants would otherwise serve. It has helped... we are pleased with our domestic violence calendar as well, which is heard each Wednesday morning. This calendar helps facilitate resolution of these cases, which cause so many problems in families. We're grateful for the assistance that we receive from college students who participate in our internship program, and they have the potential to earn college credit as interns. They assist us to ensure that the defendants listen to a constitutional rights video, read constitutional rights forms, contact their attorneys, and manage the flow of cases to be as smooth as possible. The position of presiding judge of the Justice Courts in each judicial district was established last year, and that gives a single point of contact for the effective operation of Justice Courts within the district. The presiding judge is responsible for the implementation and enforcement of statutes, rules, policies, and directives of the Judicial Council and Board of District Court Judges... and Board of Justice Court Judges, as they pertain to the administration of the courts. I'm currently serving as the Presiding Judge of the Fourth District Court Justice Court Judges. I also serve as the Education Committee Chair for our district and is the Chair of the Justice Court Board of Judges, and I'm grateful to associate with my fellow judges, to see their excellent work, and to know that they are dedicated to following the rule of law and to treating court participants fairly. Given the dedication of judges to the rule of law, it's no surprise that the very large majority of court participants realize that they have been treated with fairness and respect. I close with the words of Utah Supreme Court Justice... Chief Justice Matthew Durant in his 2019 State of the Judiciary Address to the Utah Legislature. "Our judges are careful and thoughtful in resolving the cases brought before them. Each day, in each courthouse and in each courtroom, judges work to interpret the laws enacted. The issues presented are wide-ranging, and the details are often complex. Arriving at a just result that honors the rule of law requires each judge to take the time necessary, to carefully weigh the merits of the matter, the arguments presented, and to ensure that the law is fairly and consistently applied. For the rule of law to have meaning, the public must be able to trust that the right outcome is reached. In this process, each party must have a voice and be respectfully heard. We work very hard at the Provo City Justice Court to ensure that each party has a voice and is respectfully heard." Thank you for your support of the Justice Court. It is a great honor for me to be able to serve there with such dedicated people who seek to honor and sustain the rule of law. Are there any questions that I could answer? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening.
Judge Romney, thank you for your service and for how you represent the city of Provo in the Justice Court system. And we're getting one and a half benefit out of one person down there, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to your staff and those who serve with you there.
Thanks so much.
We'll now enter into the public comment portion of our meeting, and we'll have Mr. Jones, the council attorney, give the preamble there.
Thank you. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. Can we get up to the list? Okay, there we go. "After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Additional time may be given to individuals specifically invited to speak, such as applicants, neighborhood chairs, or others that may be representing additional persons. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments for the open public comment period are invited to approach the podium at this time."
Seeing there are no individuals who want to make public comment now, we'll go ahead to our first item. It's a resolution appointing individuals to boards and commissions, and this will be presented by Cliff Strachan, our Executive Director of the Council.
So council members, August 21, you received an email from the mayor dated August 19th for a letter advising that Arturo Soza was nominated to the Civil Service Commission. Arturo is a native of Chile and has been a resident of Provo for 25 years. He holds a BFA from the University of Utah and MBA from BYU. He's an art director and has worked for many years in the graphic design industry, and she's recommended that he be appointed to a three-year term on the Civil Service Commission ending June 30th, 2022, and he'll be completing Rick Healy's term. And then to the Energy Board, Patricio Hernandez, who holds a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering and a master's degree in power transmission and distribution. He began his career at Provo Power, currently works for Rocky Mountain Power as an area engineer, and she's recommending that he be appointed to a four-year term on the Energy Board ending December 31, 2023, replacing Norm Wright. Those two recommendations, we tried to follow our usual practice of getting these people to come in and meet with the council. Thirty days have passed, and we haven't been able to, so you can act on this without any further delay.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. This item is open for public comment, so if anyone would like to talk to this item, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the discussion to the council. Council members, any discussion? We'll then call for a vote on this implied motion. Just one note, since there are only five of us here tonight, on our voting, we need five votes... four votes, excuse me, to pass an item, even though three would be the majority. We need four to pass items, so... so all in favor of this implied motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. And that seems to be unanimous. Our next item is a resolution appropriating $289,399 in various funds and transferring $50,460 from the General Fund to correct elements of the 1920 budget in account for a position moving from the Development Services Department to the mayor's office. This is a change that was made what last meeting, I think? And so this is the funding to take care of that, so looks like Dave will be... Dave will be presenting this.
Yes. Good evening, and thank you for your consideration of this item tonight. The majority of the details of this appropriation were discussed two weeks ago at the work meeting, but there are a couple of comments that I wanted to make. One is the addition, as you noted, the addition of the move of personnel from the Development Services Division or Department to the mayor's office. That added 140,000. That is a net zero impact to the budget in the General Fund, because it's taking away from the one department and adding to the other. So I just wanted to make a note of that. And then also, in the work meeting, a question was asked about the impact that this appropriation has on the General Fund, and after a further review of the errors that did occur, we determined that there is an impact on the General Fund of $71,211. And with that, I will answer any questions that people have.
Any questions from council members? Okay, thank you, David. This also is an item open for public discussion, so if any of the public would like to make a comment on this, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll come back to the council. If there's no comments or discussion, we'll go ahead and have a vote on this implied motion. All those who are in favor of this resolution to appropriate these funds from the General Fund to correct elements of the 19 to 20-year budget in account for a position moving from the Development Services Department to the mayor's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. With Mr. Winington excused. The next item is an implied motion approving the sale of a ladder truck to the Nolansville Volunteer Fire Department, and this will be presented by Mr. Dan Folet, the Finance Division Director.
Thank you, council. The... as the... as part of the fire department's normal process of rotating equipment and keeping adequate equipment to meet the city's needs, they have identified a ladder truck as being surplus property, and because of its value, we are requesting that the council approve moving that particular ladder truck to the surplus property list so that it could be sold. In addition, they have worked with a third party that specializes in marketing fire equipment, which can be kind of unique in its nature, of course, and they've identified a particular buyer for this surplus fire truck, ladder truck. And so the request is that the council approve the disposition of this particular vehicle and moving it to the surplus property list. Jeremy Hedman's here tonight, too, from the Fire Department. If you have any questions for him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm right, Nolansville is in Tennessee. Is that correct, Dan?
Yes. Yes.
Any questions for Dan or from the Fire Department?
In case there's a question, Mr. Chairman, this was not a deal struck by BYU for beating the Tennessee Volunteers a few weeks ago, just in case you were wondering.
This is an item for public... public comment. If anyone would like to comment to this item, you're welcome to do that now. Seeing none, we'll go back to the council with this, and if there's any discussion or questions, we'll go ahead and vote then on this implied motion to a resolution approving the sale of a ladder truck to the Nolansville Volunteer Fire Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous with Mr. Winington excused. The next item on our agenda is a resolution approving an improvement agreement regarding construction of a road in the Mountain Vista Business Center. And this will be presented by Dixon Holmes, our Assistant Chief Administrative Officer, and is Camille gonna... she be here for questions, or she's not here?
No, I think Brian, Mr. Jones, can I think, answer questions? Council Vice Chair Van Buren and council members, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Could we go to the visual on the map or the... thank you. Okay, no worries. I'll go ahead. So a number of years ago, Provo City was approached by the Sunrock Corporation for purchasing some property in south... southeast Provo, in the Mountain Vista Business Center. This is a little dogleg of Provo. This is Utah County or Springville on the west, Springville on the east. This is State Road 75 or 1400 north in Springville, and this is South State Street, just for getting everyone's bearings, and north is up. Ground was proposed to be used as a gravel transfer station through a variety of negotiations and discussions with others in the park. It was determined that was probably not the best use, and we had another buyer step in. David Hall's group with Hall Labs requested that they be able to purchase the property instead, under the same terms that were struck with the Sunrock Group, and that was to use the property ultimately for a commercial subdivision for more development of buildings, capital investment, and jobs creation. As a part of that, it would be necessary to build... As a part of that, it would be necessary to build a new road from the existing roundabout on Mountain Vista Parkway down to this 1400 north Springville or SR 75. The building of this road, the city was successful in securing a grant from the Economic Development Administration into the Department of Commerce, or referred to as EDA, and it's a matching grant of which the city will provide 50% of the funds, of which would come from the sale of the ground, and that the EDA would provide the other portion of those funds to build this road. The cost on that road is about $3.6 million, so the city's responsibility would be $1.8 million. The ground is currently owned by the Redevelopment Agency. Back 10, 12 years ago, the city felt that it was probably more prudent as far as the ability to sell and develop the land, to transfer it from city ownership to redevelopment agency ownership, so it's really the redevelopment agency that would be selling the ground, but it's Provo City Corporation who has the agreement with the Economic Development Administration to build this road. As we're contemplating selling this road, or selling the property, the prospective buyers understand that we're building a road, they understand that we've committed to build the road, but when we just said, "Trust us, we'll build the road," they asked if we could provide an agreement as a condition of the sale, and so we have looked at that and we have developed some language and agreement by which Provo City would agree to build the road consistent with the agreement that we've already made with the Economic Development Administration agreeing to build the road, which will then provide access to and around the business park. So, what we're asking the council to do is to authorize the mayor to execute and negotiate the final agreement between Provo City and, can you repeat those names for it?
Hall Property Holdings and Scannell.
Scannell, okay, thank you. Are the two parties in which we would sign the agreement with, again agreeing to build the road as we've already committed. They in turn will build several buildings. Hannah, can we go to the next slide now?
[inaudible]
Oh, thank you. This is still draft, but this is what they're planning on, is putting, the first building would be built right here, and then there'd be subsequent buildings built in the business park, which is consistent with some of the other buildings and look and feel and investment in the business park. The city and the representatives for the buyers have been going back and forth trying to finalize the agreement even in the last few hours, and as those have been represented by Mr. Jones, that those are more legal in nature, and that the deal points themselves that are more salient to the agreement have not substantively changed, and therefore would request that the council authorize the mayor and the administration to finalize the agreement consistent with the principles in the document and move forward in that manner. Any questions for me from the council? Or Brian, anything you'd like to add to that for clarification?
Maybe Hannah, if you could just bring up the amended resolution so that the council can see how that language has changed. If you could just scroll down to part one. So, as indicated in the work session today, there was previously a version of this that authorized the mayor to execute the attached agreement. Because there are some minor tweaks that still need to be made, we've changed that language so that this version simply authorized the mayor to finish negotiating and execute the agreement, as you've heard presented. And because the motion to make that change was made in work session, the implied motion in this meeting does apply already to this version of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Any questions for Dixon from the council? I saw making one little comment that's not even having to do with this. No, not for you either. I'm just sitting in one of these chairs and I don't really make very many comments, and I've noticed tonight, I don't think there's been a comment by a council member on any of these issues, and I think it's payback time since I'm sitting here tonight. No.
I'm just enjoying the sound of people.
This is an item that is open for public comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to comment regarding this resolution, please do so. Okay, we'll come back to the council. As mentioned by Mr. Jones, we changed this resolution just a little bit from our work meeting today, and so we are voting on the changed implied motion.
And, Ms. Chair, I'd like to also point out, there was some discussion following the work session, and I think there was a little bit of confusion on the motion that was made in the work session. It was reported during the meeting that it was a, that there was one dissenting vote for that motion, but that was, I think, actually an error, and it was actually a unanimous vote, so I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I voted, I thought I voted for it, so I would like the vote to be changed to show that I voted in favor in the work session.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I'll call for a vote now on this implied motion. Oops, excuse me.
Mr. Van Buren, this is David Harding. If I could make a comment?
Go ahead.
So, I do have some concern that it sounds like the city has made some commitments or agreements that now need to be approved by the council. I believe it was stated in the earlier meeting that it would be bad to go back and basically turn down the money that we've requested from the federal government on this. I think in this situation, I have no concerns with this proposal. I think it's great. I'm glad that we've, that we've worked this out and that we're getting a federal grant to pay for half of this. My only concern is recently with Blue Sky, we had some, whether they're commitments or not, but we had gone pretty far down the road before finding out that the council was uncomfortable with some of the points that were agreed to. So, I would just, I think this is an example of times where we could have better coordination between our redevelopment, our RDA Executive Committee, and the rest of the council, just to make sure that we're okay with things before we get too far into the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. That's noted by all of us, so we will do better on that.
Thank you.
I'll call for a vote now on this implied motion. All those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
And that is also unanimous vote with Mr. Winerton being excused. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. We have a ordinance now, an implied motion on an ordinance amending the Provo City Code to prohibit parking in bicycle lanes, and this will be presented by Austin Tater, who's the Parking and Sustainability Coordinator for the city.
Thank you. So, as I saw the need for this code on 2320 North, when the road was recently restriped by request from the residents, the school district, to make it a safer place for kids. As the road was restriped, and there was parking on both sides of it originally, and the residents agreed, okay, we're fine with this change, the school district allowed people to park in their lots overnight, and a few people still ended up parking on the street afterwards, even though there was the bike lane painted, and so with the parking enforcement, I said, hey, let's go up there, take it them, so they know they can't be parking in a bike lane. We found out it's not actually legal under city code. There has to be a sign that says, "No parking," and so this would just add to that long list of things that you can't park in or by.
Thank you, Austin. Any questions for Austin? I have one, Austin. Do we have places in the city where we've, as we've tried to provide bike lanes, but where we even had space, so we've painted a stripe for the bike lane, but they do include the parking area, too? So, is this citywide, anywhere there's a painted line, if there's not another space for parking, there's no parking on that area, in that area on that side of the street?
If it's designated as a bike lane, that means there's a symbol on the road, it's a national standard bike symbol, and Public Works designates it as a bike lane, then this would mean you can't park in that.
Okay.
You'd get a ticket.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, quite frequently, we stripe a shoulder on a road, but, and in that case, that space is typically shared by parking and bicycles or any other use in the shoulder. As Austin's suggesting, in a bike lane, we actually put a marking on the pavement. We typically also put a vertical sign, at least one per block, that designates it as a bike lane, so it's pretty obvious.
That would be the difference.
That's the intent, right? So, if it's designated as a bike lane and it's signed and the universal symbol is painted on there, then that constitutes a bike lane, but absent those two things, a stripe on the side is just a shoulder, and it's intended to be multi-use, if that's the case.
Thank you, thanks for that clarification. This is a item for public comment, so anyone who would like to comment regarding this ordinance change? Please state your name and your city of residence.
Pam Jones, Provo. I am a vice chair of the Edgemont Neighborhood. I just don't understand this at all. It's really going to put a cramp on people parking their cars on streets where there happen to be bicycle lanes. I understand that the purpose of a bicycle lane is to protect the bike riders. I suppose it would be too big a job to ask for a map of the places in the city that have bike lanes, or at least an estimate of how much of the roadways in Provo are going to be affected by this, if this has citywide impact.
Austin, if you have a comment regarding that?
So, as far as I know, this will only change one street. Typically, Public Works puts no parking signs as well, and if you park in front of a no parking sign, that's illegal and you can also get a ticket, and typically, Public Works will put no parking signs where there is, where there are bike lanes. So, currently, this will only mean, this will only affect one street, and Public Works might even put no parking signs there in the future anyways.
Okay, but you said it affects the whole city, wherever there is the symbol and the line, that makes it a bike lane, which means that nobody can park their car in there, otherwise it would stick too far out into the right lane of traffic.
Mr. Chairman, just to respond, I wanted to respond to the other question you asked, which was, where do we see that?
Yeah.
And the city council has adopted a bicycle master plan, which is posted on the website and in the city code, but the bicycle master plan is, does designate locations for current and future planned bike lanes, and so there is that, there is that document out there that defines the intended scope of dedicated bicycle lanes.
I also know, there are a number of areas where there's a bicycle lane and there's still parking. Like, the bicycle lane doesn't eliminate, every place there's a bike lane doesn't eliminate the parking, so.
You sure about that?
I noticed it last night.
Every place there's a bike lane, there is.
I didn't, I didn't say every place.
Car parking.
I didn't say every place. A number of places, and I'd have to look at a map to know.
Okay, how much?
How much what?
How much of the city is going to have a bike lane and motorized vehicle parking? And will there be signs designating it? What if the city doesn't want to spend the money for all those signs? I still don't have any idea how much of the city is going to be affected by this.
Well, that answers in the bicycle master plan. You can see what that is, but, well, but it is adopted by the council, it's part of the, part of the process.
It's a bad deal, and I suggest you repeal that.
Okay, let me just mention, too, Slate Canyon Drive is a pretty good example of where we've built what I would construe to be a complete street, where there's parking up against the curb, a bike lane, and then the travel lanes with a center turn lane, and the same profile across the other side. It's, and there, again, many of the roads we've built in the last 15 or 20 years have looked like that, so it's not uncommon at all to find those around the city where there is vehicle parking, bike lanes, and travel lanes. Maybe not in Edgemont, there may not be as many because it's, again, an older area.
Sharon Memmott, also in the Edgemont Neighborhood, and I tried to listen to the conversation and was still not entirely clear, because I don't live on 2230, and I haven't been there recently, so whatever agreement you might have with the neighbors not to park there, if there's no signs, this doesn't help me because I've come to the school to do something, and that was the only place to park. So, I would suggest that we throw something into the resolution or the ordinance that suggests a dedicated bike lane that's painted as such, so that I can know, because I am concerned with Ms. Jones about the creep, if there's just a line painted on the side of the road and that's considered a bike lane, but I don't know it, just for future, I realize that's not how this is, but just as we move into the future.
Yeah, so we define a bike lane as being striped and with the universal designation on the pavement.
Okay.
So, there's a bike symbol on the pavement that says this is a bike lane. If it's just striped without that symbol, then we consider it a shoulder and it's free game. You can park there, you can ride a bike there, you can ride a scooter there, you can do any, any of those things, but if it's a bike lane with the designated symbol painted on the pavement, then it's, this ordinance would make that a no parking zone automatically.
And so, because, again, the way this was presented in your documents, I didn't realize it referred to 2230, so I couldn't go do the homework to see what we're even referring to, how it's actually striped currently, so that I know, don't park here. I do know the area, I did have children attend, and it was a bear, and it can get really congested over there if there's an event or two. So, again, I don't, I've seen just enough to know that it rarely affects just one street, so that's my concern, is that I might add to the ordinance, and I appreciate the cost, we're trying to get away from signs, but we're going to have to do something to educate people for a little while that they're not allowed to park in a, in an actual bike lane.
My name's Jordan Hayman. I live east of BYU campus, and I just want to talk in support of the amendment. I feel like it is a small increment step towards legitimizing the presence of bike lanes within Provo City. Being a student at BYU, there are 30,000 other like me at almost any given time, and normalizing the presence of bike lanes and the legitimacy of them would go far to improving the feeling of safety as one uses them, not having to worry about running into an errant car, or, running in is a bad phrase, having to maneuver around a car in a position where a bicyclist was expecting to be in its own designated spot, having found that spot encroached upon by a parked vehicle. I brought my car to campus for this year, though I didn't wish to, but I don't feel safe traveling using other modes, such as bicycles, throughout the city. If, if it were more of a safe and viable option, then there would be fewer cars to have to try and house along the streets. Not none, but fewer. Not none, but fewer. So again, I just want to speak in favor of the amendment to standardize the preeminence of bike lanes in their specific and designated locations, to free up confusion and to make it more of a norm, as opposed to a signed exception.
Hello, I'm Stephen Aldis. I'm a student, or I'm living in Provo. I'm a student at Brigham Young University, and for the last three years, I've biked to school. I'm very in favor of this motion. My only concern would be proper signage. I know sometimes it can be difficult to understand where not to park and where to park, and students and myself often get frustrated with tickets and not understanding this. I have a question for Austin or Mr. Parker. Is signage mandatory with this new bike lane motion, or will there be signage?
From what I understand, the symbol on the ground doesn't answer. There's not always a sign that says bike lanes.
Okay.
And then usually, bike lanes are fine.
Hey, Austin, Austin, I'm sorry. Because we have to have an audio recording of this, we've deviated from this a little bit, but our usual practice is to have the public commenters ask all of their questions until their comment is done, and then have answers done afterwards, so that the answers can come into the mic, so we can get the recording right, okay? So if, so go ahead and ask all your questions, and we'll have Austin stand up and answer them, if that's okay.
Okay, perfect. So, in conclusion, I'm in favor of this motion, however hesitant for proper signage for the issue of students receiving unnecessary tickets.
Marion Monahan, Edgemont Neighborhood Chair. I'm just curious, is, you're telling me this only affects one road? And if that's the case, why is this a citywide impact? Why not just put up the signs on the one road? It, it just seems like overkill to me to, to make it a citywide impact rule.
We're not done with public opinion?
Oh, right. I guess we are done. Mr. Connect?
So, citywide impact, and, and Wayne brought up Slate Canyon Drive, which I'm not even sure if it has the symbols, but it has two, it certainly has two stripes. Makes it very clear that there is a bike lane there. And, and so, this, this would, I dare say, affect more than that one street in Edgemont, because we do have a few designated that we've already built out, like, there's, and then there's probably more than Slate Canyon.
Well, as you, as you probably know, recently, the State Department of Transportation restripped all of University Avenue north of 1230 North, and designated it as a bike lane and prohibited parking along there. So it's a, again, it's, it's certainly a growing trend. We're gonna see these on Fifth West when the Fifth West project is done, where we'll have designated bike lanes. There's never been on-street parking, well, limited on-street parking on Fifth West, but will not be any after this project's complete. So, yeah, I don't wanna characterize this as a, as a one-street problem that was looking for a solution, but I think at the 2320, right, 2320 North, was more of the impetus for, for thinking about this, and saying, you know, if, if this, if we continue to do this, it should be really clear that if something's a designated bike lane, you don't park there. And, and I think that was the, kind of the logic behind the request and, and why we brought it forward. So it's, it doesn't just apply to 2320 North, it would apply citywide, anyplace where there's a designated bike lane that's appropriately marked.
Just to follow up, so, I think we, we all, when we're driving, would never think of blocking pedestrians by parking in a crosswalk. And we should probably start thinking the same way about blocking bicycles by not parking in a bike lane. But this kind of begs the question of, you look at this list and you go, oh yeah, I remember all of these from when I got my driver's license, I had to take the test. So in the state test for a driver's license, do they happen to have, have they included yet, "Don't park in a bike lane"?
That's a very good question. I don't know the answer to that. We can certainly find out for you. I might mention, too, we get frequent parking complaints by people who park in their driveway and overhang the sidewalk. That happens very frequently, and we cite people who do that. So again, it's not uncommon for us in a place where you've actually got a designated, mixed, you know, modal issue, that we've taken the position that, you know, for, for the purpose of people in motorized wheelchairs, or moms with strollers, who, you know, can't really negotiate around a car that's parked across a sidewalk, we'll, we'll go issue a parking citation for that. And I, I don't see this as being a whole lot different than that circumstance.
George?
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, as a bike commuter myself, I pay close attention to where these bike lanes are, because I'm wanting to be as safe as I can, and I know that that, those lanes provide that kind of safety, or at least, again, that's their intention, and so, and, and I've, I've ridden all over town where there, the situation that Wayne was describing, I think Timview Drive has the same arrangement as Slate Canyon. I mean, there are bike lanes and there's parking. But when there's a dedicated bike lane on the side, and then there are cars in the way, that actually makes it more dangerous for the bikers, because you have to swing out into, into the traffic. So it actually essentially defeats the purpose. Granted, you can't have that on every single street in the city, although that would be my fantasy, maybe. I wish we were more like Holland in this regard, but, but the fact is, when it's, when it is a dedicated lane, then, then I think bikers need to be able to rely on the fact that it's, it's secured in that way. I mean, if I'm riding on a shoulder, I know that I'm taking certain risks. But if I'm, again, if I'm intentionally trying to get to, from point A to point B and using those lanes, I, I think it's important that we have some expectations that they're gonna be safe. I don't know if, in this particular case, for the sake of public education, if it's, if, I mean, this makes sense citywide, because it's always gonna be a problem, to the degree that you decide, that we decide to stripe something as a dedicated bike lane, then we have to have the confidence that that's gonna be preserved as such. But if it's a matter of greater public education on this, I don't see why it would hurt to have a sign, a no parking sign in, on, on the street that's in question, and, and we continue to, you know, promote this idea and help people to gain understanding about it, so that people are just more careful.
Or, rather than putting out signs that we wouldn't do elsewhere, issue warnings for a certain amount of time, which is kind of what they had to do in the same location when they did the north side, and people actually had to stand there and educate and say, hey, you can't do that, you can't drop off kids, you gotta go in and, and do it correctly. And then after a while, everyone was educated.
Austin, there was a specific question asked. Did it get answered, or did you have a comment regarding the question?
And I'll clarify some things. Yes, it applies citywide. The reason why I said that it seemed like it would only apply in this case is because 300 South, University, 500 North, roads that you can confuse between on-street parking and bike lane, they always have no parking signs. And 2320 North is currently the only one that could be confusing that does not have no parking signs. I believe those are coming, but the reason why we wanted this is because we wanted to be able to enforce, so we could train people early. And we couldn't, we couldn't do that until either the signs went up or the code changed to allow this, so we thought now was a good time. He was asking about the difference between, I think, how you can tell the difference between a shoulder and a bike lane. Typically, bike lanes are a lot narrower. Bike lanes range from four to five feet in width, which is too narrow for a car to park in. Cars are typically six to seven feet in width, and so if you're parking your car and now you're overhanging into the street, and so not only is it detrimental to bike traffic, but also car traffic, someone could sideswipe you, your parked car, as you're dri, as they're driving by, and if you open your door into traffic, there's another hazard right there. So parking in a bike lane is just dangerous for everybody. And then another way you can tell the difference between a bike lane and a shoulder is, like what Wayne said, the bike lane always has this universal symbol designated by a national standard, it has a bike and a person on it, and that's, that's about every intersection or, or wherever the city determines where to place it. And I think that answered all the questions people had.
Thank you, Austin. Cliff?
Just to confirm, Hannah dug it up, the Utah Driver's Handbook for 2018-19 states, quote, "Motorists should not park in a bicycle lane."
Very good. Thank you, Hannah. Thanks. Any other comments from the council? Questions, Franklin? Okay. Well, we'll call for a vote on this implied motion, which is an ordinance amending the Provo City Code to prohibit parking in bicycle lanes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, that is unanimous with the excused Gary Winerton. We now have an ordinance that amends the Provo City Code to establish minimum bicycle parking standards, and this has citywide impact, and it's also presented by Austin Tater, our Parking and Sustainability Coordinator.
So we brought this to council about two weeks ago, talked about it in both work session and council meeting. And just to give a brief summary, with some recent developments that were supposed to be very easy to live in without a car, startup crossing, 200 city view, a lot of them have had either substandard or no bicycle parking. And we felt like it's not, it's not even the intent of those types of developments. And so, as I was reading through the bicycle master plan, it says that the city should adopt minimum bike parking standards, just as we do with car parking standards. This is also supported in the general plan, where it says that the city will, it says, I think it says drastically increase the number of, or the amount of bike infrastructure in the city, something like that. When we talked about it last time, there was a debate on the wording "multi-family housing", because that phrase is not defined in our city code, and so Mr. Jones and I sat down and clarified that. We use the same language for multi-family housing that's found in the parking, the car parking minimums. And then there was also a question about the use of the word "permit", because a future proposed code for parking reductions would no longer use the conditional use permit, rather just approval from the planning commission. And so again, Mr. Jones and I took out that phrase, "permit". And then as well, Councilmember Winerton talked with me afterwards about making sure that the long-term parking, there's not a requirement for it to be gated and fenced because of the difficulty of handing out passes or keys to employees, and with turnover, who knows who has those keys? And so it's, it's no longer required, it's just, just promoted. So that's all that's changed since the past council meeting.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the council? This is also open for public discussion. Any comments from the public?
My name's Derek Wilson, live in Provo. I just, I'm in support of this because there's been multiple times where I've not been able to go do business somewhere, because I was not sure if I'd be able to park my bike nearby. So this would allow me to have confidence that I could secure my bike wherever I went in Provo, whether I'm visiting people or doing business. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we'll close the public comment period. Bring it back to the council for any discussion. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and call for a vote on this implied motion, which is an ordinance amending the Provo City Code to establish minimum bicycle parking standards. All those in favor?
Aye.
The voting is unanimous with Councilmember Winerton excused. Our next item is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately one acre of real property, generally located at 674 East, 3230 North, from residential agriculture, RA, to a one-family residential, R110. This is in the Edgemont Neighborhood, and this will be presented by Dustin Reida, Provo City Planner.
Thank you. Here's the property outlined here in red, that the applicant is requesting a rezone for. This is our general plan map, so anytime there's a rezone request, we, we check to make sure that the proposed rezone will match with what our general plan map is calling for. So in this case, the general plan has a designation for residential use, and the proposed rezone is for residential use, so there's compatibility there, not a need to change the general plan. Our zoning map shows here the property is currently under the residential agricultural, RA, zone, which is a zone that requires a half-acre minimum lot size. The applicant's property is approximately an acre, and they're looking to subdivide that to have three lots on it, and so to accomplish that, they've requested the rezone to the R110 zone, which has a minimum 10,000 square foot lot size. And to do that, there's an existing home on the property, at the, at the front of the property here, this would become Lot 1, and it would be conforming to the setbacks and minimum lot sizes and everything within the R1 zone. The Lot 2 would be what we call a flag lot, as well as Lot 3, so there'd be two flag lots. And a flag lot has a flag pole portion and then the flag area. Both of these lots would, would have access, so they have their own pole to meet the flag lot ordinance, but then they'd have a shared driveway down there. Originally, the applicant was looking to put one flag pole down one side and one down the other. There were some concerns from a neighbor here, that there'd be that, that driveway, which they thought would be more like a street adjacent to them, so the applicant has moved both over onto the, the far side here to help resolve that concern. These would be, this would be a 20-foot wide paved driveway, essentially, that you'd see in a typical residential neighborhood. It's not a, it's not a street or a private lane, it's just essentially a driveway with shared access for those two lots. And so the flag lots in the back, they'd be a third of an acre each, so, so they'd be large lots for the R110 zone. The adjacent zoning around the property here, the RA zone, all these properties would remain RA zone, they wouldn't be changed, it's just this property that the applicant owns would be rezoned, so the adjacent properties would keep all their agricultural rights within the RA zone. Across the street on the, in front of this property is R110 lots adjacent to that, so it'd be a similar zone there, which would fit, fit well. So staff sees this as a good infill opportunity to provide some homes that will still be able to fit within the, the general character of the neighborhood. The planning commission has recommended a positive recommendation to the city council on this item. Be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions for Dustin? Stay close, in case they come. Is the applicant, yes, would you wanna go ahead and approach the podium?
Thank you. My name is Courtney Huber, and I live in the Edgemont Neighborhood. My parents and I have purchased this home on about one acre of land. We, I've grown up in the Edgemont Neighborhood, and my parents have lived there for 30 years. I'm now raising my children there as well, so we all deeply care about this neighborhood and enjoy living here. and enjoy living here. As you may know, though, main level living opportunities in the Edgemont area are in short supply, and my parents are now at a point in their lives where they're thinking about their housing needs as they age, and they are looking for opportunities to age in place and build a home that will meet their changing needs, allow them to remain in this neighborhood where they have spent so much of their lives. One question that has been asked us is why not just divide this in two without doing a rezone? And we considered that, but dividing the property in two would still make two large lots that would be burdensome for an aging couple to maintain. And as well, by creating three lots instead of two, we create some opportunity for an additional family to enter an existing neighborhood, as well as making smaller lots that would be more affordable. As outlined in Provo City's general plan, Provo's primary housing goal is to provide adequate housing that meets population demands and supports the health, safety, and welfare of the public. As a strategy to meet housing needs, infill in established neighborhoods is becoming increasingly common. The rezoning and dividing of the land we're proposing is a method of infill that allows responsible reinvestment into an established neighborhood. From Section 3.3 of the general plan, quote, "Provo is committed to pursuing an optimal housing inventory to ensure that every neighborhood is vibrant, healthy, and stable. This proposal will help optimize the housing opportunities by using existing land in a more efficient way, giving new families an opportunity to invest in and become part of this neighborhood." Again, referring to the city's general plan, this infill proposal supports the goals outlined in Section 3.4.12, maintain and encourage good quality, sustainable housing, and infill developments. By bringing new families and investment, this change will boost, will boost both the short-term and long-term health of the neighborhood. It's a method of growth that complements rather than changes the existing neighborhood. In this part of Provo, the vast majority of zoning is R110. Of the homes located within 500 feet of this property, who I understand received notice of this hearing, 75% are zoned R110. Six out of the nine homes that are adjacent to or immediately across the street from this property are, have lot sizes that are .25 acres or smaller. Several of the homes that are in this RA zone are actually non-conforming. So we are just simply asking for a zoning change that will align our property with the vast majority of the neighboring properties. Each of the flag lots resulting from this subdivision will retain a third of an acre, which again is a larger lot than 2/3 of the neighboring lots. So we are asking the city council to approve our application for this property zoning to be changed to R110. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to invite the neighborhood chair, Marianne Wannahan, if she'd like.
Counsel, when this first came to our attention at a neighborhood meeting, there was a lot of opposition. The neighbors wanted it to be retained as RA. I spoke with the applicant afterward, and she said she was going to go talk to everyone who had been at the meeting and discuss it with them. By the time we got to the planning commission, there was no opposition except for the letter from Lynn and Dennis Chapman, and I believe you have it in your, in your file. So this does conform with the, the general plan, what they are proposing here.
This is open for public comment. If there's others in the audience who would like to comment, please approach the podium.
Counsel, my name's Lana Bailey. I live in the Edgemont area, and I support this plan mostly because I want to have a vibrant neighborhood where people feel like they can find a home, and that's really hard to do in affordable homes in our area. And we don't want it to become an elitist place. We want to, we want young families to reinvest, and, and we want it to be a place where older people can also find a home. So I support this plan. I don't see any reason why neighbors would, would not support it.
Thank you.
Sharon Memmott, I just have one concern. Again, as I read the packet, the letter that Marianne mentioned isn't in it that I could see from the Chapmans and their concerns. I also didn't see the letter from Courtney, their response to it, which I've gotten to read here. And so, so my main concern at this point, as was discussed, the original plan was to put the driveway on the, the flag pole on the west side. It's been moved to the east side. And my concern is that it's been presented that that would be considered parking because that was one of the concerns of the neighbors. And, and a 20-foot-wide is not going to allow for parking, so I don't know if there's a way to build into the plan. Also was mentioned at planning or in that packet, something about a hammerhead, which I also don't see in this packet, which would allow for emergency vehicles to turn around at the end of the flag lot. So it's just to get those things in writing so as it's actually done, it's not forgotten as the properties are sold.
Dustin, can you respond to the emergency turnaround issue? Question?
Yes. Let's see if I can jump over to the plat map. There it goes, right there. So on this, this driveway would come up here as part of the city review on this, the fire department and engineering have requested that there's a hammerhead here where they'd be able to turn around a fire apparatus and, and head back out. And so that's provided. It's not shown on, on this document, but it's on the plat that they would be recording with the city for the subdivision. And so that would actually function for two things. It'd be the backup area that the fire department needs, and it would also be the driveway into that garage for that lot, for that home, so they would just orient their house to have that be their, their driveway where they'd be able to park. There shouldn't be parking along the flag pole portion, they just have to park off-street or, or on-street like other neighbors. Was there another question?
Fine, because of the two that were raised. Okay. Thank you.
Question, Dustin. So yeah, you need a 20-foot fire lane so there wouldn't be parking there, but in regards to having like two driveways for two flag lots and having them on either side, typically you would be putting your utilities in your right-of-way and under your driveway, so you would have like twice the expense, it would seem, to have to dig up two areas for your, for utilities rather than sharing it, maybe digging one trench and putting in both.
Yeah, I think it'll be a preferred option to have it that way, to have sewer on one side and water on the other side and kind of keep that distance separation that they're looking for in, in public works for those utilities. It's a good option to have them located together like that for that purpose.
Yeah, and then my understanding is they always have the water line above the sewer anyway, right?
Yeah, there's a distance that they have to be set apart from each other so that there's, if there's a break, that there, there's not a contamination.
So I'm just thinking, would you agree, Wayne, it's more logical to have one access and, and one point where you put the utilities through?
Yeah, yes, and I, I think it's important to note that anything that gets in the driveway is going to be a lateral, so our water meters will be out on, at the edge of the driveway on the, you know, on the street. The sewer line and water line that'll be going back down those driveways will be private laterals. And so again, will still require separation just to comply with the code. But again, the city's not going to be driving back down that driveway to dig up a water line if there's a problem. That's a private service line.
Right. My point was it would just save, it was, it's smart development.
Right, it does make sense to put the two water lines together, the water services and the two sewer laterals together. That would certainly make sense.
Cliff?
Just a point of clarification. So the Chapman's letter was in the packet that was published on Thursday, it's in there. And then we republished today, and that included Ms. Huber's response to the Chapman letter. Those are available online.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion from council members? Mr. Sewell?
I just wanted to congratulate the applicant on a very well-presented, well-researched case, citing the general plan, statistics, talking to neighbors, addressing concerns that some of the neighbors had, pointing out that you're really only asking for what most of the neighbors in the area already have in terms of zoning, so I, I'm heart-pressed to think of a reason why we wouldn't approve this.
This, this item does, since this is the first hearing, this does qualify to be automatically put off if there's any council member that wanted to do that. See none. We'll go ahead then and call for a vote on this implied motion. All those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
That vote is unanimous again with Mr. Winerton excused. We now have an item that will be presented by Brian Jones, council attorney. It's an ordinance to amend the consolidated fee schedule and to ratify corrections to Provo City Code Title 10. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, councilors. This is a, really just kind of a cleanup ordinance. A few, let's see, what was it, back on June 18th, the council approved ordinance 2019-30 that adopted a budget and, and included the consolidated fee schedule. In that consolidated fee schedule, there was, part of that, of the table was the impact fees for the next, the stormwater impact fees for the next several years. There was a typo in the table. If you, I don't think, if you scroll all the way down to the exhibit, yeah, you keep going, right, a little bit farther, a little, right there. So if you'll notice, so this is the table, this table is out of the impact fee study, and you'll notice that it shows in 2025, the impact fee for stormwater should be $8,262.93. When the council passed the budget in June, this table was hand-typed into an exhibit document, and, and it said $7,262.93. So if that were accurate, then the impact fee was actually go down in 2025 and then back up in 2026. So this, the ordinance in front of you corrects that by amending the consolidated fee schedule to change that number related to, related to the year 2025, 2026. That's part one of the ordinance. Part two makes some cleanup corrections. Recently, there was a, another ordinance in, let's see, it was also on June 18th of this year, Ordinance 2019-31, that made significant changes to Title 10 regarding sewer and stormwater fees. And when our code publisher went to publish, they reviewed it and found that there were few instances where there were just some words missing. So as we just saw right there, the sentence is incomplete without the phrase "are discharged." Then down in the next phrase, it looks like as the ordinance was reviewed, was revised a few times, some words were left in that didn't need to be. Then down in the definition of wastewater, the word waste was left out. And then finally, the next section, there was an abbreviation that was, that had a typo in it and a grammatical error in, in the next sentence. So because those were actual textual, textual amendments to the code, rather than just have the code publisher do those, we, we brought those back to the council to ratify those changes. Since the code publishing company caught them, they actually, this is what the online version already looks like. They've, they already made these changes to represent the, the council's intent, but we're asking the council through this amendment to, to ratify those changes and, and make that the official version of this portion of the code.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. This is a public comment item. If there's anyone that'd like to speak to this item, please do so. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for any discussion or questions. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote then for this motion. All those in favor of the ordinance to amend the consolidated fee schedule and to ratify corrections of Provo City Code Title 10? All in favor?
Aye.
And the vote is unanimous with Mr. Winerton being excused. That brings us to the end of our agenda, so if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the municipal council meeting by unanimous consent. Thank you for coming.